Good morning, welcome to Harton County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court present. Commissioner Pelt is appearing by phone. And so at this time of the meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the pledging of allegiance.
Good having you, Father, we come before you today, Lord, and we're thankful for this day. Well, we're thankful for the breadth and life that you've given us, the abilities and the talents. Well, we thank you for all of our elected officials, Lord, and all of our employees that work for the county. We pray your grace and mercy and covenant blessings upon them. Lord, we pray that you'd be with, Lord, the coast of Texas and ourselves, Lord, as this tropical storm comes on and brings some rain. Pray that you be with all the first responders, Lord, all the elected officials, Lord, who have to make decisions. Well, we pray for our nation, Lord, we pray that, Father, that you would bring calm, Lord, to our nation. Lord, we pray over this presidential election, Father, we just pray for safety for all the candidates. Ask you to watch over their families in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three is approval of minutes of the September eighth, two thousand and twenty, regular and special meetings as presented by Brenda Austin.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from the September eighth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting, and approval of cash statement as presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams, if you'll unmute.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty cents. On our cash report and general checking account, we have eleven million, nine hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. In tax pool, we have three hundred and twenty-one dollars and nine cents for totaling cash funds of eleven million, nine hundred and five thousand, twenty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Move to prayer.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding annual review and approval of the Harton County investment policy by Deborah McWilliams.
Um, on the investment policy, this is just the annual review and approval. Um, there's no changes been made or any amendments that need to be made at this time unless the court feels like we need to.
Move to prayer.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, except that Commissioner, we've lost Commissioner Pelt during that, I'm sure he will call back in just a moment. So just let the record show that Commissioner Pelt dropped off before we took that vote. Item number six, consider adoption of resolution twenty dash twenty, reappointing Deborah McWilliams as the county's investment officer pursuant to the Harton County investment policy.
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, discussion and possible action concerning adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one county payroll schedule presented by Ms. McWilliams.
Um, the payroll schedule's just the standard, every other Thursday, there'll be no special changes on it. But, um, we'd just like to put it out every year to make sure we have the twenty-sixth in the budget year and that everybody's aware of what the day is.
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item eight, authorization to pay county bills as presented, Angela Gore, good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approvied.
I don't think that's necessary because we're not up and running on that, so just throw it in. As long as either the microphone's on, you'll be fine.
The pre-approvied expenditures for September the ninth through the tenth are five hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Pre-approvied expenditures for September sixteenth is nineteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Expenditures for Commissioners Court on September the twenty-second is six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-two cents. Attached to the list of additional bills is an amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. And please note, the list includes the payment to Jefferson County for the EOC COVID-nineteen related expenses in an amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. The total expenditures and transfers is one billion, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and forty-four cents. The gross payroll for September the tenth was five hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and two cents. And the total transfers for that payroll was six hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Move to prayer.
Second.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Ms. Gore, on the item that you talked about for the expenses through the regional EOC, the one twenty-six, four twenty-one, sixty-seven, is all of that covered by the CRF money?
Correct.
Corona virus relief funds, money from the CARES Act?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, special recognition of personnel for meeting years of service milestones, we'll start with Linda Austin. And then next will be Alvin Roberts, you know, I'll come sit back down. You want to come up here and look up? All right, Alvin, you want to just stand there?
I can stand anywhere.
All right. We'll start with Linda and I'll come back. So, Aunt Linda?
Yes.
If anybody didn't already know, Linda is my aunt. And she's been with Harton County for thirty-five years, she said she feels like she just started yesterday. She said she had a five-minute speech prepared. Congratulations, thirty-five years is really such a, a great honor. And we appreciate all the work that you've done for Harton County on behalf of the court. And I know you have a few things you'd probably like to say, so we're out of here.
I've enjoyed working for the county and it does not seem like thirty-five years has gone in my career. I went to work here on, uh, July the twenty-second of nineteen eighty-five. And, um, I've seen a lot of changes, um...
Zooms, but why?
In fact, I'm on, I'm on a Zoom, uh, they just, I just broke for a few minutes, um, this, uh, the, uh, cybersecurity collection. And, um, I'm, for instance, our, uh, early voting, uh, when I started to work there, I was working for Geraldine Collins. And our early voting was like about half of this courtroom, that's where we'd get early voting, in the office. And now we have four early voting locations, so it's good. We went from typewriters to, uh, to computers, so...
Now, do you all still have typewriters?
Yes, we do. For light color, for mutual, since when they come back. But it's, it has been a lot of changes and I have enjoyed working for Harton County, so, um, I'm planning to work for two more years, so... I'm not, I'm not ready to retire, so...
Ah, that's cool.
Uh-oh.
Next, we have Commissioner Alvin Roberts. I was asking Alvin this morning, I said, you started out as a reserve deputy under Mike Hoseapple, right? And he said, yes, but, and then he started telling everything he's done. So I thought I'd just let him go through his start here at Harton County as a jailer and then whatever else he wants to say about that. But this certificate says twenty-five years because we go by certificate, I mean by consecutive years of service. Alvin had a break in time there at some point in time, but total he has...
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six years with Harton County. So we really appreciate the job that Alvin's done for the citizens of Harton County all these years and does an excellent job as one of our county commissioners. And I appreciate him, I appreciate getting to work with him. So, uh, we'll take a picture, then I'll let him say what he has to say. What? Breaking the law. There you go. Do I have to...
Your eyes closed.
Man, sound tough.
Yeah, I'm sure you want to say something, right?
Why don't you picture your eyes closed?
Are you kidding me? I don't know, here, let's do it again.
Oh, here.
Yep.
Not in the font, still reds. I'll try it again. I guess I could put my mask on.
That's all right.
Same other time.
Thank you for participating.
Yeah. As long as you said, uh, my, my tenure at Harton County was kind of by accident. Um, my wife worked with Arthur Guy at Rigs Weaver in Beaumont and we had moved up here to Lumberton. And at the time, there was a mighty, uh, population of Lumberton of thirteen hundred people. And, uh, it was right at election time, uh, in nineteen eighty-four. And, uh, Arthur said that, uh, he knew I'd, I'd worked at Jefferson County and, uh, had got my jailer's license down there. And he said that, uh, we sure could use some relief jailers. And he didn't say anything about being a relief deputy, which I could have done also, because I had that also. But he said, uh, we could use a relief jailer. So I came up to the sheriff's office and they handed me a big set of keys and said, okay, you're a jailer. And there was, I think, seven people in jail. And, uh, they had a little kitchen up there, everything was working good, um, and Sheriff Hoseapple at the time said, uh, you want to be a reserve, I think that would be pretty good too. So I became a reserve deputy jailer, uh, and worked, worked there, um, and eventually, uh, I worked with Gary Spears. Gary did the same thing I did, he, he worked at a, I, I was working at the time for Bill State Utilities and Gary was selling, uh, tobacco. And, uh, we, we worked as unpaid deputies, we filled in for anybody on vacation, uh, you know, whatever, whatever shifts they needed, they would call us. It, it was, it was really a, a good experience, I enjoyed working here. And, uh, eventually, uh, I ended up working here full-time, uh, which is, was in nineteen ninety-five. I've enjoyed Harton County, I've enjoyed the people, enjoyed working under Hoseapple and Sheriff Kane and, and now Mark Davis. Uh, it's, 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 uh, it's grown, like Linda said, things have really, really changed. Uh, as a matter of fact, before I was a full-time deputy here, I'm gonna throw one on Nubbin. Before I was a full-time deputy here and, uh, Nubbin was a full-time dispatcher here, or had come and worked there temporary dispatching and stuff. One night I was working step, uh, we didn't work step very often, we didn't work radar very often. But, um, I had been given a, a hand radar gun and told to go slow the people down out on sixty-nine going into Beaumont. Very first car I stopped was Nubbin Cooper going to work with DPS. In a Camaro. And I said, what are you in a hurry for, I said, I'm late, I gotta go. I said, okay. Yeah, it's just, that's the way it was, we, we really had a good working environment. Um, it's still a good working environment in Harton County, I've enjoyed being here the whole time. And now as a county commissioner, I, I'm enjoying this job also. But thanks, everybody, and I'm not lying, winded or anything, I'm sorry.
Congratulations. Next is Brandy Stutz with the Justice of the Priest Office in Precinct Two, Judge Brewer is going to present her with her certificate.
Brandy's got about a twenty-minute speech, I hope y'all...
She needs a bit, you got to talk.
She practiced it in our office this morning.
Yeah.
Now, Brandy's been with us, with Harton County for ten years. She's been with me for five years and done outstanding job. She just basically brought the district clerk stuff down to a lower level than me and I mean, it's so professional over there. And thanks to her, because she does a great job and I'm glad to have her. Now, uh, especially considering the first, uh, three or four people that I hired, you know, didn't last very long, one of them lasted six hours. Before her and so it doesn't last until it's renewed, so I, I have bad complex as part of it. I'm glad you were with me, I was picking the wrong people. So I want to congratulate Brandy on ten years with, in five with me. And I hope that she, uh, stays with Harton County for several more years. I was hoping that we'd get another fifteen, maybe twenty. But it's possible that she could be looking at a different direction in the future, I don't know, that just, you know, rumor.
She is now.
Do I need to say something?
Oh, she didn't take a picture.
Okay. Thank y'all for letting me be here for so long. I actually started with Linda originally and then I moved up to District Board and then your wife taught me. So all the ones on the thing today, like I've had association with the different ones, but thank y'all.
Congratulations.
I can all back on words, too.
All right, and we also have Amanda Bracken with Road and Ridge Three, but she's asked for us to postpone that until, uh, she wants to wait until Commissioner Pelt is back and present her with her certificate. So we're gonna table item nine D until she can, uh, come back and join us with the commission. Item number ten, consider and possibly offer, possibly authorize to offer dual insurance plans to personnel through Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool for the two thousand and twenty-one plan year. Debbie Mendes-Saville, Human Resources Director. Debbie, are you here on the phone?
Yes, sir, I am.
Let me turn that up where everybody can hear you. All right, so we have, uh, some information here in our packets. And I just received a message from, uh, Ms. Ryan that said that, uh, you told her that we have to take action on this today, is that correct?
Yes, sir, uh, in order for, if it does pass, PAC is going to need time to get it programmed for the new plan year, which starts December one.
And they wouldn't be able to give us until next week so, so that we could, uh, kind of digest all this information?
Uh, well, Orlando Espinoza is supposed to be, uh, in on the meeting on Zoom, uh, he could probably explain that a little better.
He is now here.
Uh, he was giving me some options, he's not on...
No, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, we'll just, uh, if you don't mind, Debbie, I'll just break the court a little bit about what, uh, this is, to the best of my knowledge. And, uh, if you or anybody else, uh, need to correct me, of course you feel free to do that. This is an all... Hello? I can, now, who's this?
Okay, this is Orlando Espinoza with PAC.
All right. Orlando, you have provided us a quote for a dual option plan. Uh, from what I understand, this would allow employees that have, uh, uh, dependents on their policies. This would give them an opportunity to pay a lower premium, but it also increases their out-of-pocket expenses or their deductibles greatly, is that correct?
Correct.
And it also reduces the coverage of their insurance, the way I understand it, is that correct?
Uh, I'm sorry, you said reduces what?
Reduces their coverage, they would not have the same coverage under the plan that we have now?
Yeah, so it would, it would be a different plan that you guys are offering currently.
Okay. So just for the court, uh, this, this came up rather quickly last week. Um, and Debbie went to, to PAC to ask for this additional option. Um, the, uh, open enrollment starts here in just a few weeks and as you heard, Debbie, just say that we would have to make a decision on this today if we're gonna offer this additional plan to the employees. I can tell you, this is something that the sheriff's office was interested in looking at. Uh, the sheriff had asked Debbie to, uh, obtain this and I had told the sheriff, after talking to Debbie and Angela this morning, that we would probably not take action on this today because there's gonna be some questions I believe the court will have that we're not ready to answer just yet. And I say, when I say we, I mean the financial folks and, and human resources. So I was wanting to not rush through this today, but it sounds to me like we have to make a decision one way or the other today, which I, I, I don't like.
Judge, I, I would prefer us not to have to make a decision today, even if we have to postpone it for a year.
Well, we can either table this indefinitely, we can vote it down, or we can postpone, we're gonna have a special meeting Monday, we can postpone it if, and if PAC says that's too late, then, uh, we postpone it for a year.
Hey, Judge, if, if I can just, really quick, uh...
Sure.
What I would say is, if you guys want to table it, what I can do is, we can, I'll get back with my, you know, it's mainly our, our programming team, dealing with our administrators, uh, for the fur waiters and, you know, dealing with all that, uh, with the program. So if I can, uh, if you guys want to table it, that's fine, and what I'll do is, I'll go back and I will basically just say, hey, this is what's going on. And then I will try to get us some more time, uh, to try to get through this so that we can actually, you know, possibly vote on it next week. And then I'm open to answer any questions that you guys may have. Um, so I can try to see if I can get you guys a little bit more time and then, so you guys can table it. And then if, for some reason, that's not a possibility to wait until next week, then what we can do is, we can just table it until possibly next year, if possible.
Um, here's what I know right now, after talking to Ms. Gore and Ms. Mendes-Saville this morning, somebody with family coverage, this would save them in premium, a hundred and twenty-six dollars per month.
A hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents.
Even, I mean, even more accurate, thank you. It would...
That is with a seven hundred and eighty-four, eighty-one dollars and forty-two cent employer contribution, that's another decision that we need to make because the premium is, uh, eight hundred and one dollars and forty-two cents for employee only. We currently pay eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars towards the, um, employer's contribution, towards our current policy. And so we need to decide how much we're going to pay towards the contribution to know what kind of savings we're looking at.
Well, for that hundred and twenty-four dollar and some change, reduce in premium and increase it doubles their, out of, I mean, their deductible to fifteen hundred. And if it's, uh, out of network, it, it more than triples it to forty-five hundred, is that correct?
Correct.
I just don't think it's a good plan. I move to table it indefinitely and let's look at this again next year.
Second.
Have motion by the chair, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Orlando and Debbie, I want to thank you for rushing to get this to us. I just don't feel comfortable, uh, rushing forward today for sure and, and even by Monday, I'm not sure that we would be ready to, uh, make a decision on this. And it just doesn't really look like a good option for the employees. Trying to do something good for the employees, I think, would actually end up hurting some of those that chose to go with this alternate plan. And I just think it's best that we take our time on this and look at it next year.
Judge, while we're on this...
Not a problem.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Commissioner Cooper.
While we have this gentleman with us...
Yes, sir.
Did, did we recently have a, did you, did you form a committee for us to look into, uh, our options on, uh, medical insurance for employees?
Yeah, I want to say that, that was before November, last year, I...
You might have the answer, this gentleman might have the answer, why, why are we at a, such a high rate right now? Why can't we get anything lower for our employees as far as premiums?
Orlando, are you able to, uh, hear Commissioner Cooper? And if so, can you answer that?
Not a problem. Um, so I would say, you guys, you have a very, very rich plan at the five-year deductible. Um, so anytime that you guys are gonna have a, a rich plan, that is going to increase the, uh, the premium just naturally. And then also because, so if you look at the, um, your family deductible, it's fifteen hundred dollars. So that reason alone is gonna be why that, that premium is gonna be, you know, a, a lot higher for the, for the different tiers. Uh, so that, the fact that you guys have such a rich plan, that is gonna be the, the driving factor as to why those rates are, are higher in those families here. And I do believe, let's see, if I'm looking, um, let's see. I'm pulling up your renewal right now just to... Because I want to say you guys did receive a pretty favorable renewal this year. Yeah, so this year, we only saw a one percent increase, um, on the plan. Um, so which means that that, that means that your plan is actually running about what it should be, which means that we are collecting about as much premium as we are putting out, or as much as we are paying out in payments. Uh, so, um, and this is kind of what I, the conversation that I was having with Debbie was that by adding this plan, uh, the second plan, um, you know, it, it is, it is vastly different. Um, it does have a much larger, um, deductible. Uh, the, the hope is that we will see more people add, more dependents, and so then we will start getting more contributions, uh, in return. And so then, if we could do that, when people are adding their children, usually children don't have high claims. So then, we're adding more contributions, but then we're not adding a lot of claims. So then we can actually reduce your loss ratio, which will actually, in the long run, be able to help us bring those costs down on all, on both claims, which was the hope. Uh, that's the hope of why we want to add those, one, to give it an option to a little bit more affordable. And then, two, in the long run, if we are adding more, um, children and more, uh, families, make more family coverage, then we are collecting more. We're reducing, you know, the hope is that we're reducing that, um, that loss ratio. And then that is a very large factor in how we determine your renewal. Um, so if we can reduce that loss ratio, then we can actually start reducing those costs. And then eventually get you guys down to where even your five-year plan is, you know, at a more affordable rate as well.
I think I followed you somewhat there on your explanation of... I think as a county administrator, this court has a responsibility to make sure that we get the best that we can for our employees. And I do understand the concern coming out of the, uh, sheriff's office because some of those new jailers over there, if they have their family on the current plan that we have, one of their paychecks goes to insurance. And I understand your explanation and it, and it did make sense. Uh, but I don't, I'm, I'm agreeing with the judge, I don't think this hundred and twenty-four dollars a month is gonna make a difference with the higher deductibles and everything for us to go this route. But thank you for your explanation.
Okay.
Yeah, not a problem. And this is, I'm, I'm happy to have these discussions with you guys next year, uh, with a little bit more time and kind of give you guys as many options as we can to try to work with you guys to, uh, you know, ultimately help you guys meet your goals. Uh, and getting you guys a little bit more affordable plans. So, uh, you know, after this, I'm happy to continue the discussion with you guys to, uh, help you guys meet that goal.
Orlando, if our renewal's in December, when is the best time to start having these talks, is it around May or June?
Uh, so in May or June, May is when we put out the renewals for our ten-one groups, uh, so for our twelve-first group. So, um, yeah, around that time, we can definitely just start looking and start having these discussions as to what we're looking at. And then we'll have a better idea of kind of what your claims are looking like for the, for the year. Um, so yeah, so around May, June, we, it's definitely a good time for us to start having these conversations.
Okay, if you don't mind, go ahead and pencil this in because we're gonna wanna, we're gonna wanna look at that. Commissioner Roberts, I get it, sir. Commissioner?
Uh, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm Commissioner Roberts. I was on the committee that looked into, uh, our insurance back a few months ago, I guess it's been over a year ago, actually.
Right, almost a year, yes, sir.
And, uh, what I saw, uh, was not, not contradicting what you just said, but, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield's making a ton of money off of us and we're not going anywhere near our, what, what they're having to pay out on claims. And, uh, I saw that ratio, I don't, I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but, uh, that, you know, it, it was just ridiculous. But, uh, I don't know if you're looking at those figures or what they make off of us every year, but it was, it was, I, I'm gonna say, close to half a million dollars. And that's, that's just unreal, that we have to pay in that much and, uh, they're not paying out that much.
Yeah, I, I can look that, I can look that up, that's a conversation we can have and kind of look at, uh, what the loss ratio is. So, you know, because of your size, loss ratio is gonna be a, a bigger factor in what we look at for the renewal. But then also on top of that, what we look at is we look at, uh, different, uh, demographic factors, area factors. So we look at, you know, probabilities of claims, uh, there's a lot that goes into the actual renewal, uh, when we're looking at, you know, how much we need to collect. Uh, so we can, you know, we can have these conversations and figure out kind of what we can do, um, to help. So I can, let's see, I'm looking it up right now just to see kind of where you guys are sitting at. Okay, so, um, over thirty-six months, you guys are sitting at about an eighty-four, actually, no, sorry. Yeah, eight, four point four percent loss ratio, which is, it's good, I mean, that's why, you know, we were able to give you guys a one percent, uh, increase this year. Uh, now, of course, we look at the thirty-six months, we look at the twelve-month loss ratios, um, so that's the thirty-six months, that's the long-term loss ratio. And then let me look at your twelve-month loss ratio just to kind of give you guys a... And of course, your, your loss ratio was based off of a twelve-month loss ratio that we did back in, I believe it was June. So we're adding a coup, a couple more months of data to this current one. So your current twelve-month loss ratio is sitting at ninety-eight point one seven percent. So our break-even point at that, um, is about ninety-four percent. So at ninety-four percent, that we build in, um, about six percent for, you know, the admin cost. Uh, so, which is a lot better than if you went out to, you know, Blue Cross Direct or Edna, because they're building in profit margins, which we don't build in. So their break-even point is about eighty percent. So we're, our break-even point's about ninety-four percent. So which means that right now, your current twelve months is actually a little bit higher, so we're actually losing a little bit of money in this, uh, for, over these past twelve months. Which is why you saw a one percent increase and not, you know, a, a bigger number, because it, you know, in fact, we're not losing a bunch of money, it's just, you know, in over thirty-six months, we thought that it's actually, you guys are actually below, you know, a good amount below what our break-even point is, so... So, so this is what, you know, this is where it also comes down to, we're trying to get that number to go down. Because when we can get that number to go down, we can actually give you guys better renewals, and we can actually reduce those costs, which we have had a good number of groups this past year that did receive rate decreases. So that's where we want to get you guys. We want to be able to get you guys to the point where we are giving you guys rate decreases every year. And so that's what these conversations that we have are about, about kind of figuring out what can we do to get those rates to go down. Because at the end of the day, we want you guys to have, you know, lower rates. We know that, you know, budget is tough for you guys, and, you know, even a one percent increase is still an increase, and you guys still have to figure out where you spend money from. And we totally understand that, which is why our goal, which is, you know, me and Ashley, your wellness consultant, our goal is to help you guys reduce costs and reduce your overall spending, so that that way you do have more flexibility in different areas where you may not have, you know, the ability to pull that money from. So, being the conversations that I'm happy to have with you guys to help you get to that point.
Orlando, we appreciate all the information, and we do have you on record saying that next year our rates are going down, so we appreciate that. And the C L B D is here, he's going to put it in the paper as well. We appreciate your time here today, and we look forward to getting with you again next spring.
Not a problem.
All right, I don't remember if you voted on this, so let's take a vote. This motion was made by the chair, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any other discussion on item number ten? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Number eleven, presentation by the grant administrator and P T X associates to provide update on ongoing disaster recovery projects. This will be presented by Mr. Greg Wabi. Mr. Wabi, you should be able to share your screen with us, and I'll also put it up, so everybody can see, and we are also live streaming on Facebook.
And as I get set up here... What do we got? Everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you all for having an interest in the subject matter we're working on. We have a number of things, even grant-related field that we've been tracking since Hurricane Harvey. And so, over the last few years, we've been working with a number of state and federal agencies to obtain as many, or funding for as many projects as possible that are in the disaster recovery and mitigation realm. And so, got a lot of good things to report. There's a number of things that are happening recently that we want to update you on. So, I'm going to be starting with just a recap of some of the grant programs we're talking about, and I'm going to go over to a map that shows some of the project areas we're talking about. I'm going to start with what we're calling the F I F program. That's a new program type that's administered by the Texas Water Development Board. The grand total allocation for the state of Texas is approximately seven hundred and seven billion dollars. Those are competed for across the state in the form of bridged applications, which was submitted earlier this summer. In terms of cost share for this grant program, this is a mix of grant funding and long-term zero-interest loans. We just, in the last few days, got the results back from the submission of our bridged application. There were two hundred and eighty-five applications submitted across the state. The top one hundred and forty-seven applications have been approved for funding, or at least encouraged to take the next step towards application approval. Hardin County's application was for what we're calling an eastbound storm drains project, which I'd be happy to share additional details on the location and the framework of that. But the results were that this project ranked number three out of ninety-two construction projects submitted to the F I F program. So that's in the top three percent of all construction projects submitted statewide. Got some very strong feedback, and so I want to compliment everyone that worked on that. When it comes to the funding itself, the Hardin County's grant funding of six point two million was the seventh-largest award out of a hundred and forty-seven award amounts approved. And so, yeah, the amount that they're putting on the table is significant, and we're getting some excellent feedback from the Water Development Board. So, that's the F I F program. Moving on to what we're calling the M I T program. That's a community development block grant for mitigation. These are HUD funds that are administered by the Texas General Land Office. It's also somewhat of a new program type that was created in two thousand and nineteen. The grand total amount of funds for this program is four point three billion. And we're currently in round one of that funding, which is the competitive application stage. The cost share for M I T is one hundred percent federal, there's no local match. Hardin County's project applications to this program are currently being developed. So we're working on that very hard at this time, and the deadline for those applications is October twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty. So that's the M I T program. Moving to what we call disaster recovery infrastructure, or Harvey infrastructure. Once again, a community development block grant for disaster recovery administered by the Texas General Land Office. We're currently in round one of funding, which is considered allocation funding. Hardin County has been allocated eight point five million dollars to identify infrastructure projects that qualify for this. The cost share is one hundred percent federal, no local match. And we've been granted an opportunity to update our application to this program. The deadline to do that is November fifteenth, and I'll be showing you some project ideas we'll be talking about. Last for now is what's referred to as the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or H M G P. Those are FEMA funds, which are administered by the Texas Division of Emergency Management, or T D M. Those are competitive applications. We have submitted four total projects for funding. Well, in fact, four projects have been selected for funding through this program, I should say. Thus far, three of those four projects selected for funding have been awarded. We still have one project to go. I'll be talking about that on the next one. The cost share for this particular program is seventy-five percent federal, eighteen point seven five percent state, and six point two five percent local. There's more to be discussed about each of these programs, but I just wanted to provide a recap for what some of these acronyms stand for and what it means. So with the next slide, you can see a map of the county. I zoomed in just a little bit. You can see it cuts off just a bit of the western side of the county, and portions on just a little on the east and into the south. You'll see call-out boxes or arrows pointing to the general project locations for none of the applications and projects that we're working on. We have those color-coded across three different types. The boxes you see that are in maroon are projects that have either been awarded or are slated for awards. The yellow boxes indicate current project ideas or applications that have not yet been submitted. And the white call-out boxes are a few project areas that we're looking at for potential future application development. So, as far as how to tackle these things and talk about each one, probably move, start with the maroon ones, the active projects, working from, starting over on the west. We have what's called a Harvey D R project for a Saratoga detention pond. That's approximately three point one million dollar flood drainage infrastructure project. Just to the west of that, next one over, is what we call Saratoga four-by-four fire trucks. Those are some funding requests for brush trucks that will make it possible for our fire departments to attack fires with the best equipment available. Another one of those similar four-by-four fire trucks projects is currently identified in Coons. Just below that, you'll see we have what's called an H M G P FEMA P three sixty-one Hurricane Saper. That project has been selected for funding by the Texas Division of Emergency Management. We're working through some finer details about getting that award approved.
And Greg, if I could stop you for a minute, nothing's changed since you updated on that project last time, other than you've been answering some questions that I have, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The structure of that project application is still approximately four point five million. We're in discussions with T D M with regard to how we go about tackling that award, the timing of it, and whether to phase that project or not. Yes, sir.
And the reason I wanted to say that is I think the last time we discussed it, we thought that about forty-five days later, we'd be back here to make a decision again. I think we're past that time, and we don't have the information necessary to go forward and make any decisions on that project just yet. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I paid everybody on that. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to the west of that, we have another maroon box, C D G D R acquisition. That's an item that's actually going to be distributed out across various locations in the county that are to be determined. We went ahead and plugged it in on the map. Just to the east of that is a radio tower project, which we're quite proud of. It's, it seems to be moving forward for funding. That is a radio tower that would be located at one of the precinct barns there in Salisbury. Important upgrades to our communication systems throughout the region. So, that's a D R project. Moving just to the southwest of that, we've got an H M G P flood buyout project, approximately twenty properties, and that's also not in a specific location. Those properties are spread out across the flood plain of the county. Directly south of that is a H M G P project, Lumberton Detention Pond, located directly north of F M four twenty-one and on the west side of Lumberton. That's a project we're kicking off, we're getting the engineers working on some of the planning that's necessary to actually get that construction going. I'm going to mention the one that's directly south of that, an F M A flood buyout, it's about twelve properties with repetitive losses. Many of them are located in the Pinewood vicinity, so that's why that box is located there. Mentioned last, all the way over to the east side, we have our eastbound storm drains project through the F I F that I outlined earlier. That's a seventy-seven million dollar project currently. We're hoping to get the cost down a little bit, I think that's going to be important. But so far, we've gotten excellent feedback from the Texas Water Development Board, very positive results. We're hoping we can work with them to make that project a reality. So with that, covered some of the active projects. I'm going to go back over some of these yellow boxes, just to brief everyone, starting back over on the west side of the county. We have road improvements for Old Sour Lake. Just directly to the southeast of that, a potential project for Jackson Creek Detention Pond on the upper portion of the Jackson Creek watershed. Moving up to the north part of the county, we have road improvements on the west side of Gore Store Road, and then a separate project location for road improvements on the east end of Gore Store Road. Directly south of that, once again, road improvements project in the McNeely Settlement general area, and then also road improvement on Billard Road. Now, I want to reiterate, those are project ideas, those are going to be decisions and prioritization that you'll have before you to consider which ones are, should be pursued in form of applications. Got one more to talk about that's in that category of consideration. That's the Mill Creek Detention Blood Control Project. I might actually skipped over one, just to the west of the Mill Creek one we have, was called the Pin Oak Ranch, or it's also known as Beaumont Creek Detention Pond, that is located on the north side of four eighteen, north of, north of Coons and north of Salisbury. So, those are some of the active project applications. There's going to be some talk and prioritization and consideration on the importance of those. I won't probably bother everyone by going into great detail about the rest of these white boxes, which are project ideas. But just so you know that it's out there, there's a conceptual design for a large reservoir on the west side of the county. We also have scoped some detention ponds in the area to the west side of Sour Lake. Also some additional detention for the west side of Pinewood. Upper Boggy Creek Detention is another location, we've actually scoped some good potential there. Black Creek Detention. And then the last one is Cooks Lake Road Road and Bridge Project. So with that, before I turn it over to questions and comments, I do want to compliment really all the departments of the county. They've been tremendous in their skills, in their work. And of course, the commissioners and Judge Daniel have been fantastic in your leadership. We've got a lot of things working right now, and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you, Greg. So you might have any questions or comments regarding the presentation?
Greg, I just want to say I appreciate the work that you and Amanda have been putting in, in your firm, since I've been on the court. I think this is the most comprehensive plan that's ever been presented to our court. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
I would say I agree, lots of hard work, good job.
Amanda, you have anything you want to add?
No, sir, just, we really appreciate Greg and all that he's done, and we'll just keep that in for a moment.
I was getting emails from him late last night, which is not uncommon, and we appreciate you very much. Anything further? Thank you very much, Greg. All right, we'll move on to item number twelve. Discussion on possible action to approve job description for registered dietitian in the Hardin County Whip Department, requested by Natasha Jones, whip director.
Same way.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper, segmented by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number twelve, discussion on possible action to approve job description. I'll just get that. Number thirteen, discussion on possible action regarding a refund exceeding the five hundred dollar limit, account number zero zero five two two five dash zero zero two five five zero for the tax year two thousand and nineteen.
Same way.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Cooper, and that total is five hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Number fourteen, discussion on possible action to approve the revised plan for William Lee Subdivision Dana Lane Extension located in Precinct Three. Ms. Jones?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a subdivision that was actually approved in nineteen oh three in Sour Lake, but they never did the development. Now they're wanting to do the road development. They have not changed any lot lines. We did have to go back and approve a thirty-foot road instead of a sixty-foot roadway, but we did have them add drainage. So I talked to Mr. Pellicotta about it, and he approves it, and the engineers approve it.
And we do have the letter from Jeff Levens here with L J A that says he recommends it for a purpose.
Motion for same.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, segmented by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item number fifteen, consider and possibly authorize request by Harden Jefferson I S D for contribution in an amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars as reimbursement for the purchase of four hundred and fifty devices for wireless connectivity of students participating in remote learning as a result of COVID nineteen. This would be utilizing coronavirus relief funds as authorized by the CARES Act.
Same way.
Same. Have motion by Commissioner Roberts, segmented by Commissioner Kirkendall. And as far as the amount goes, do you all want to contribute the full seven thousand five hundred dollars? And let me just say, while I'm asking that, the school district provided- And let me just say while I'm asking that, the school district provided us a copy of their invoice for this purchase, which was forty-seven thousand twenty-five dollars, and they're just asking for some assistance. But they've asked us and Jefferson County, as well as the cities of China, Bevel Oaks, and Sour Lake. And I just felt like if we contributed up to seventy-five hundred, we would be doing our share for the citizens in the unincorporated area of Hardin County. This also allows Hardin Jefferson ISD, if they are able to obtain any funds through the CRF, it will also open them up to other grant funds through another source, through I think TEA, is that correct? To help with this reimbursement as well, so that was the reason for the seventy-five hundred. And to my knowledge, he has not gotten a commitment from anyone else for any contribution.
That's under the CARES Act.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So this will not come out of the general fund, it comes out of the CRF, and Mr. Tucker has confirmed that this does meet an eligible expense for that CRF money.
Yes, good.
Okay, seventy-five hundred.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, discussion and possible action to enroll all Hardin County employees and elected officials who have access to a government computer system or database into the free cybersecurity training course for two thousand and twenty-one, provided by Texas Association of Counties as required by House Bill thirty-eight thirty-four.
Similar.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item seventeen, authorization for county judge to sign any local contract with the city of Beaumont, city of Port Arthur, Jefferson County, Jasper County, and Orange County. This is for inclusion of the southeast Texas Auto Theft Task Force.
Similar.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eighteen, permission to purchase of two thousand and twenty John Deere three-ten AL backhoe loader, VIN number ending in four one five seven for Road and Bridge Three, in an amount of seventy-six thousand three hundred dollars. This purchase will be made utilizing a cooperative purchasing program, and if the purchase is approved, this would also need approval for the following budget transfer. Seventy-seven thousand from line out of zeros one seven six two three five seventy, equipment purchase. I'm sorry, I said from, but that's two, it should be coming from zero one seven six two three 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 four, materials and supplies.
Move to approve.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve the purchase and budget amendment, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen, discussion and possible action on recommendation from evaluation committee concerning statements of qualification received concerning engineering services pertaining to projects for the community's development block grant mitigation fund, also known as CDBG MIT. Ms. Sims, good morning.
Is it unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
Qualification statements for engineering services were opened on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, at two P M in the purchasing department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary, and Stacy Eckert were present, we received eight. Fitz and Shipman, LJA, Sigma Engineers, KSA Engineering, TLC Engineering, Arsene Wilson and Cole, Mark Whitley and Associates, and Sean Bergen Polk. The evaluation committee was Commissioner Kirkendall, Judge Chris Ingram, and Laura Hake, and Sean Bergen Polk with the firm that scored the highest.
Move to approve.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to approve the recommendation by the evaluation committee of Sean Bergen Polk, any discussion? I want to thank the committee for serving, as always, we appreciate your time. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty, present results of bids submitted for overlaying approximately fourteen by seven hundred and sixty-eight feet on Sunflower Lane, twelve by four hundred and forty-five feet on Blue Bell Lane, and twelve by four hundred and twenty-five feet on Huckleberry Lane, all located in Precinct Two. Ms. Sims?
Bids were opened on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, at two P M in purchasing department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary, and Stacy Eckert were present. LD Construction bid three dollars a square yard, and CMM Construction with two seventy-five a square yard.
Move to approve the low bid.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to approve the low bidder, which is CMM Construction, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one, present results of bids submitted for overlaying approximately twelve by two thousand forty, sorry, two thousand four hundred and fifty feet on Buck Gilmore Road, located in Precinct Two, Ms. Sims?
Bids were opened on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, at two P M in the purchasing department front office. Myself, Erica Singletary, and Stacy Eckert were present. LD Construction's bid was three dollars a square yard, and CMM Construction, two seventy-five a square yard.
Move to approve.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to go with the low bid of CMM Construction, any discussion?
Yes, sir, just for the record, this is a road that was damaged in the Harvey flooding, and so we'll be using Harvey-related money to fix this road.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-two, consider and possibly approve memorandum of understanding between Hardin County Constable's Office, Precinct Four, and Hardin Jefferson ISD regarding Deputy Constable Scott Ali, serving as a school resource officer of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year, effective September first, two thousand and twenty.
Similar.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, and the constables here, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I appreciate y'all, it's working out well, and also she'll be working on the amendment for a possible second officer, but every day is every day.
Great, we appreciate you providing that service to the school. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, discussion only of any item not on the agenda without taking any action. I would like to make sure that everybody on the court is agreeable with a special meeting on Monday, September the twenty-eighth at nine A M, is that good for everyone? And the reason for that meeting is to assist the WIC Department with spending some state funds on a vehicle purchase that they need. And of course, if anybody else needs anything on that agenda, please send it to the agenda email address by noon on Thursday, because that has to be posted by the end of the day Thursday, or no later than nine A M Friday, but we're gonna post it at the end of the day Thursday. Then also, we need a special meeting at nine A M on October first. The main reason for that meeting is to conduct at least one budget amendment that needs to be done, that cannot be done on the fiscal year twenty-one budget until October first. Is that date and time good with everybody? And again, if anybody needs anything on that agenda, if we could receive that by the end of the day Friday, is that right? Okay. And then I believe Mr. Wabi has told us that we need a public hearing before our next regular meeting, and this is to receive citizen comments on the CDBG MIT application, is that right?
That is part of the process, yes, sir.
So if we could do that at nine A M on the thirteenth, which is our next regular meeting, does that sound good with everybody? And if you could work with Amanda and Misty, I think that has to be in the paper today, couldn't the deadline today to get that in the paper? All right. And then, we all got an email yesterday, the Commissioners Court did, from Allison Bass and McGee regarding the two thousand and twenty redistricting, and one of the questions he asked in there was whether or not we would be putting together a citizen committee, and I think that's something that we want to do, is that the pleasure of the court?
Yes, sir, we did it last time.
So if y'all don't mind, if y'all would start thinking about some citizens that would be good to serve on that committee, and I'd like to have two commissioners serve on that committee as well, if y'all will let me know who's interested. I know Commissioner Cooper's told me before he's interested, are you still?
I'd like to, because I think.
I mean, I gotta decide between.
I know, I've got the least populated, so I know it's going to be taken in some more areas, so I would like to be in on that.
Well.
Okay.
It don't matter to me. Yep, we got time to think about it, so let's think it over, and in the meantime, if y'all would be thinking about some citizens that would be good to serve on that committee.
How many citizens?
What do y'all think?
I wouldn't agree with last time.
I think they had one from like each city, like there was one from Lumberton, one from Sillsby. I think there was one from Coons. I don't know if we have that paperwork, but.
We can look and see.
Basically.
What are y'all thinking, maybe?
One from Sour Lake.
Seven-ish?
Yeah, that sounds good.
That sounds good, or is that too many, or not enough? All right, well, if y'all just be kicking that around, let's be ready here before too long to get that going. The person that's been working the screening table at the front door, I'm thinking about ending that at the end of next week, and if anybody, any department head or elected official has any questions or would like to discuss that now, we can do it, or we can do it anytime between now and, say, early next week. I will have that person come over from the Health Department, that person's still going to work here in the Health Department, doing data entry and some other things that they need at the Health Department. I will have that person come over as needed for court or any other times where we're going to have a lot of people coming in. Otherwise, we've got the machines now, and I just plan to put a sign on the screening device that just says if the alarm goes off, go to your car and call this number, we'll decide what number that is. Somebody recommended yesterday that we'd have to call Janice in the county attorney's office, since we definitely agree, I thought I'd go ahead and say that. But we'll come up with a number for that person to call, it'll probably either be the county judge's office or somebody at the Health Department, but we'll work on that.
Did you say the county attorney was on?
Yes.
I would congratulate her for being one of the finalists for the next vacancy on the Supreme Court.
I bet she appreciates that.
She didn't unmute.
No, she's probably laughing, if she said, she's unmuting now, go ahead. She said, I'm out. All right, last but not least, if the emergency management coordinator, can you just give us a quick update on tropical storm beta? He participated in the ten o'clock call, is why he wasn't here in the beginning.
Yes, sir, so as of ten o'clock, tropical storm beta has now been downgraded to depression. In our area, we're looking at still one to five inches of rain through Thursday. If the rain band's set up over us, obviously double that last number, we could be looking at ten inches of rain over the next two days. A wind gust possible of twenty to forty miles per hour. Storm surge, which actually does affect us in a certain way, two to three feet in the areas where storm surge is normal. The saltwater barrier is at a minor flood stage currently, which it has risen since this storm started. All the other waterways in the county that are monitored are at normal or below normal heights. So, any other questions?
No, we just want to make sure we don't need to get sandbags ready, and that just sounds like we're still good on that, is that right?
Yeah, I'm gonna say no on sandbags at this time.
Okay, great. One quick note, I know everybody's ready to leave, but on the screening, the employees that are doing the self-screening forms and emailing them to the Health Department, if we'll keep doing that through next Friday, after next Friday, I'm gonna leave that up to each department head. If y'all want your employees to continue doing that, the Health Department will continue taking those and reviewing them, but I don't think that it's necessary that we continue to do that. So after next Friday, which is October the second, we'll stop doing that as well. To my knowledge, all of the screening that we've been doing over the past several months has caught two people, one employee and one citizen, with a high temperature from coming in, and I believe both of those, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe both of those persons tested positive for COVID. So it has caught two, but it's just a lot of extra work that we're all doing, and most of the people who have tested positive for COVID, whether they're employees or citizens, have not had the fever or answered yes to any of those questions, it's just one of those things. So we're gonna just continue doing that, but if any department head or elected official wants their employees to continue doing it, the Health Department will take it. And again, if anybody would like to discuss that, I'm open to it. Anybody have anything else? Commissioner? Any of the officials present?
Move to adjourn.
Same.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank y'all very much for your time.